Good evening. This is our selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, December 15th. I'd like to say that we are broadcasting in accordance with Governor Baker. Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Section 30A, Section 20, the open meeting session portion of this meeting will be held remotely in an online conference mode hosted on zoom.com and members of the public will not be able to physically attend. The meeting will be broadcasted live on Comcast Channel 12 and can also be viewed via live stream on W H C, W H C A TV and it will subsequently be broadcasted on youtube.com. It is now seven oh six. Sorry about starting late. We had some technical difficulties, but we're basically all set right now. Can we all please rise to the places? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic. One nation. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And as customary, I'd like to just have a moment of silence and in your thoughts, whatever's personal to you, just remember them. Thank you very much. I need a motion for bill and payroll warrants, please.
Oh, move Brian.
Right here, a second.
Second.
Okay, any any discussion on it? Seeing none, roll call vote, Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
I'll vote yes, and Kyle's not just remotely now or?
Yeah, I'll call up an extension until he dials in.
Okay, alright. Next, I need a acceptance, a motion to accept the correspondence in the read file.
Oh, move Brian.
Okay.
Alright, any discussion? All in favor, Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. I need approval for the meeting minutes for open session, November 17th, 2020. Do I hear a motion?
Oh, move Brian.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And Dan will vote yes. I need a motion to approve the meeting minutes of open session on December 1st, 2020.
Oh, move Brian.
Your second?
Second.
Second, Randy, any discussion? All in favor, roll call vote, excuse me, Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Kyle, welcome?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and I'll vote yes. Next on the agenda is the chairman's report and Lisa can, the discussion will be town administrator's search. Lisa, you can go into the
Yes, Justin's gonna put me in the waiting room.
I'll move you right now, Lisa.
Alright.
Okay, alright. The reason I had this put on the agenda, I was thinking, next Friday, we'll be having a very long day going through the inventory, you know, the initials agenda as far as dealing with the new possible town administrators and it's a very long day and I know that some of the people want a weekend to think about it and I was wondering if, do we all need the full weekend? Or would we like to maybe have a Zoom meeting, say Monday morning, we'll say, instead of wait until Tuesday night where it was a few days before Christmas? I don't know what the thoughts are, the board. Anybody have any thoughts on it?
I mean, if I could, Dan, my thought would be, I'd prefer to keep it at night just for my own work schedule.
Okay.
Anything, 8:30, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking about maybe a 15 minute meeting as far as, I mean, I imagine people will have their thoughts, so you still need to keep it up.
I am trying to be careful with the state town.
Yeah. Okay, Brian?
I'm in the same position as Justin. I'm probably not going to be available during the days for the foreseeable future, so night meetings are going to be better for me.
I do, alright, I guess then we'll keep it at night. Kyle, you have any thoughts on it?
Yeah, I'll go at night if that's what's comfortable.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to put it out there. I mean, I know it's a few days before Christmas and I don't know if anybody has their last minute Christmas shopping to do or whatever they do for the, for that week. So just want to put out there, so we'll probably have, then we'll schedule the meeting to appoint the new town administrator, we'll say, you want to go Tuesday night? Is that what you're looking at? Or you want to do a Monday night?
I don't think it matters to me which night really.
I mean, I thought we had already kind of figured this out that we were doing it Tuesday, the 22nd.
Okay, alright, if that's what everybody wants, it's comfortable, I'll go with that.
Fun.
Alright, so we'll have, we'll have our next meeting.
And just something to think about, we have to before the process begins Friday, I think we need to figure out how we are going to, what the actual voting process is going to be. I don't know if Bernie's gonna give us some suggestions or, but I think that should be determined prior to the interviews even starting, so.
I agree with you. Now, I did watch the meeting when they were appointing the new town administrator in in Abington and it didn't look like it went very well. I was wondering if the fact that if someone wanted to make a motion to put all four all four applicants into the vote and then we go alphabetically, one by one and see what the votes are. With that, I mean, we might, you know, we might want to ask Bernie what the, what's the best procedure? Because what we don't want is like a two, one, one, one or something, you know what I mean?
Well, that doesn't pass anyway.
Right, it needs a majority, we need three.
Yeah, we're governed by Robert's rules and it must be a majority, a three-fifths majority whoever gets selected.
That's right.
I would rather see us actually if we have somebody we want or, you know, if it varies that you nominate the candidate you want, then you see if it gets a second and it opens up discussion about that candidate.
Okay.
And I think
It's not a bad process.
I would rather speak on the positives if, you know, depending on, again, we don't know who it is, but I'd rather see us speaking on the positives than rather on negatives.
Right.
Why you're not selecting somebody and I think
Alright, so, so basically, so you're thinking that, well, someone will make a motion to pick their choice, we'll say, and we can vote it. And if it gets, and if it gets a majority vote, it's right off the bat, it's, you know what I mean?
Yeah, well, and you could go around and you know if it gets a second or it
Right.
You know
Right, if it gets a second, that means that at least there's a vote there, right? And if it doesn't get a second, we go, and we could probably nominate, well, I was gonna say alphabetically, but probably not. As each person nominates somebody, if it gets a second, then we'll vote on it. If it doesn't get a majority, that vote, that person will say is like eliminated, right?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would assume that's the way it works.
Yeah.
Making motions over and over if, if
Yeah.
Yeah, if someone fails, you can have a few more and then circle back, it's not a
Right, but I'm just saying, if we go alphabetically, we'll say, and somebody votes for the, some emotions for the first applicant on there, right? And it doesn't get a second, then that would, I would think, scratch them from even in the running. And then another person may want to vote for another person. And if that gets a second, then we voted. If it gets three votes, then I would say it would be over. Does that make sense?
I think so.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, obviously, we can ask Bernie before it starts. I just, it needs to just be ironclad before any interviews are done, that the process itself.
Yeah, I think that's what we'll deal with the half an hour prior to the first interview.
Yeah.
Which will work fine. Kyle, you have any?
No, that, that sounds like a plan to me.
Yeah, okay, alright, that's the way we'll go. And so we will, I guess we will on the, what, would we decide that following Tuesday is when we will make our recommendation or our vote on who our new town administrator will be, the new one. So we'll, I'll ask Laurie, well, Laurie's taking this, if she can post for Tuesday. Seven o'clock, good for everybody?
Yeah, seven.
Tuesday at seven o'clock. Okay. Alright, we can, you can take Lisa out of the out of the
Alright, I'll let her back.
Whatever you call it.
Bullpen.
Bullpen, yeah. Tell me when she's on. Lisa, you back?
I am here.
Okay, thank you. I guess now we're all done. I guess, and the next on the agenda, town administrators' report, update on COVID-19.
Okay, um so as of our most up-to-date numbers that the nurse provided me with this afternoon, we have a total of 53 positive cases. That's basically the most information. I have not gotten any additional information that we have any identified clusters in the town. So that is a positive element, no clusters. And we are still in the red, unfortunately, as many other communities around us. And we have our chief Grenow here, who can speak a little bit about the vaccination drive-through that is in the planning stage right now. I know that there's been a article in the Express that mentioned it, but Chief can give us a little bit more information as it stands today with the supplies he's ordering and plans he's putting in place.
Hey, Chief.
Pass it to you.
Yeah. Chief Grenow.
Sure, so as you know, over a month or so ago, the state reached out to us and wanted to know if emergency dispensing site was updated as a drive-through operation because they don't want any vaccinations done in-house in the community. They want everything done in the field. We, I met with both of the gentlemen from, from the Department of Public Health a few times. The plan has been updated, we're good to go. We're about to sign off on an agreement with Brockton Hospital. Brockton is going to store the vaccination for us. If it gets to that point, everything is still pretty much up in the air on the vaccination program. You know, at the end of the day, I think DPH is kind of iffy as to how that they're gonna push the vaccination out to all of the general public outside of the healthcare providers. I think it's going to be a learn-as-they-go. So there's also a couple, I know Johnson &amp; Johnson is getting ready to, 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 to release a vaccination that does not require freezer temperature. It's a normal refrigerant type of temperature, so you know, there's a lot up in the air. Logistically, we're set, I'm like, we're ready to go. If they came out tomorrow and said that we want you to vaccinate your senior population in town, then, then we could do that. But I don't expect to see that until probably late April or early May.
Chief, just question, have we purchased what we need, like the tents and the signs and things at this point?
Yeah, if you notice, the two sign boards are up, there's one at Temple on West and there's one on Washington Street by Walmart. Just brief, like quick signs, like hashtag stop the spread, please wear a mask and WhitmanCOVID19.com. Those messages can be changed for updating, say like town numbers, stuff like that. If we chose to, to our school, to our school, that to make information. The tents are yet to arrive, they should be here this week and the lighting plant's here, so, so we're all set to go. As of today, I think we have 34 nurse volunteers signed up.
Wow.
The firefighters are, are in talks right now and, and, and we're and we're addressing just some very minor concerns that they may have. And on top of that, most likely next week, I've got a meeting tomorrow with, with other firefighters. We just purchased 400 rapid tests and, and we've contracted with professional ambulance out of Cambridge for the PCR test and we're, and we'll be ready to test our own town employees, probably starting next week, should any of them become exposed or come down ill and have the signs and symptoms. So what we would basically do is, is have a form a rapid test on them. If the rapid test is positive, then they're positive. If the rapid test is negative with signs and symptoms, then we, then we would perform the PCR test, which is the huge cube chip up the nose. We call a courier, they pick that up and bring that back to, to like MIT labs and we have the results in 24 hours. So, so the way that we look at it and the way that I'm looking at it is it's rapid testing. At most, it's a one day, I might turn around time on the PCR test. So if I was to lose a shift of six, I could have them all tested and take that 14-day quarantine down to maybe a five or seven-day quarantine. You've got to think in the back of your head, it cost us, I think, it was several thousand dollars for the test, but if I lost one shift for a 14-day quarantine, that's $28,000 in overtime. Just to cover that one shift of six members. And it's very similar for the police department also. So this is a very, I'm like proactive step. We should be up and running and ready to go, I believe, like by the beginning of next week. And if you look back at what went on in town hall last week, we could have been in there and tested everybody and been out of there in an hour with all the test results that we needed, so. So that's where we stand with that.
Okay, I, one other question I have, when, when we decide to start giving vaccinations for the COVID-19 with the vaccines, it's just going to be Whitman residents or can Hanson residents come or Abington residents come?
Strictly Whitman? As of right now, from what we're being told from DPH, as of right now, it's strictly Whitman residents and each community will receive their own supply of vaccinations. That, that being said, nobody really knows how many vaccinations each, each of the communities is go, like will receive. And how rapid, if we stick with the Pfizer, which requires negative 86 degrees, it can only be out of the freezer for, I believe it's two hours. So we would have to run to Brockton Hospital and grab 400 doses and come back, mix it properly, have that all set and go back and forth, so it, it, it would not be a fast process versus a different vaccine that's, that's a one-shot deal, that's room temperature or, or like refrigerant and we can run three, 400 cars a day through the vaccination program and have the town done it, probably we can have. So depends on what the state does and what they say and, and what they want to push our way.
Good, excellent. Anything else? That's it? Anybody else, anybody else have questions of the chief?
I may as well.
Yes.
Do we have a latest update on the CARES Act? I believe the ambulance got approved.
Yes.
Yes, I was actually going to mention that next. So we got the good news that the CARES Act, the Plymouth County did approve the ambulance that we purchased for COVID only. And that would, that was actually submissions two and three, so we so far have been, we're going to receive $389,677.79 in reimbursements from the CARES Act. I am waiting to hear from Tom O'Brien when they will be coming to Whitman to provide us with a check of those funds. So that's very good news. Submissions four through seven are actually waiting review and approval at this point. That's the most up-to-date that I have. So I gather where everything is due by December 30th, the submissions four through seven will start to move forward rather quickly.
Lisa, do you know, have we received any requests on man from the schools, regional schools, both of them?
Yes, we, from Whitman-Hanson, we did receive requests for the technology, for the laptops. So that we have received those requests. I have not seen anything come my way for South Shore Technical High. They might have submitted it directly through KEN. But yes, Whitman-Hanson has submitted, I believe, everything that they've purchased up to date to KEN.
To date, okay, that's it. Alright, thank you. I'll probably get ahold of Tom Hickey and find out if there's anything coming our way to get it ASAP.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have a question. Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
The chief, I was on, I'm actually on it right now, it's mass.gov and I'm looking at the vaccination schedule with phase one, two and three and, and I'm wondering, our setup that you're planning, is that strictly for the phase three people? Or is there going to be any phase one and two? Because obviously, that's a lot sooner because the phase one, it's actually says December to February on it, so I didn't know what, you know, are you redoing just the phase three part for this drive-through?
So as far as we know right now from DPH, we're only going to be involved in the phase three approach. The phase one approach is basically healthcare, first responders, long-term care facilities. With the exception of first responders, we don't fall into any of those other type of categories. All of my staff here is, falls under Brockton Hospital's umbrella. So my staff will be vaccinated as soon as Brockton Hospital does their staff and has, has like adequate, like over there because of our medical, because of our medical control, like agreement. As far as the, the police department, we're working on that with the Brockton Hospital right now, just to see how that we can get them, them, unlike vaccinated. When we move into phase two and they're looking at the K through 12 and the teachers and stuff like that, I, I, I've not had a discussion with Jeff yet, but, but we would have no issue stepping in and, and, and helping move that process along. Part of the nurse volunteers that we have for the vaccination program is all of the school nurses. So I would have no issue like stepping in and working with them and like trying to get, get to my call their staff, staff and we're vaccinated also.
Great. Anyone else have any questions of the chief? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lisa, next on the agenda is the update on the VSO search.
Yes, so on Monday, Selectmen Zanson, myself and VSO, Chris Buckley from East Bridgewater, who's been helping us out, we reviewed a number of applications. We actually got a very good response to our advertisement for the Veteran Service Agent Officer. We did select four candidates who have very good credentials and background. We plan on interviewing them Thursday via Zoom, good thing. We've, I've reached out to all of them. They're very excited to have the opportunity to do it, to interview and we'll see who comes to the top. VSO Chris Buckley is putting together some questions. That will be very, very helpful on that end and he's been a very, very big help to us since Tom has retired. And for the month of November, we initially, he was volunteering his services to us for the month of November, but he's really, really invested a lot of time with servicing the veterans that we have here. So we thought with a suggestion from Selectmen Zanson that we do pay him for the hours that he put in in the month of November, where he's been gone basically above and beyond to make sure that anybody of a veteran who requires services gets it. So nobody has gone without any services and he's really done a lot to make sure all the recertifications are going in on time. So he, again, he's gonna gone above and beyond and I think it's, it's agreeable that we, we pay him for the hours for November.
Okay. Brian, will you guys say something?
Yeah, I concur with what Lisa said, is a very impressive young man and and just aside from the fact that nobody should work for free, I believe it's probably against the law to do that to get somebody to work for nothing, but he deserves every penny and probably then some because of how much time and effort he's put into. He's really helped us a lot and you know, I really think it's what he's done is really helped the, the veterans in the community and I just think it's the right thing to do. And we should really take care of him and thank him for helping us out the, of this transition time. And these candidates we have, I believe whoever comes out on top is going to be very helpful for us, so we could owe a lot to him for finding that out. So I would hope that this board would, would vote to pay him for November and I would make that motion.
Okay, I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Alright, for discussion, Brian, the question I have is, do we have the money in the budget? Lisa, do you know?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Anybody else have any questions?
I think we would have had the money because of, we would have been paying Tom anyways, so I think it was just a transition from one person to the other, so, but he's been very helpful.
Okay. Seeing no other discussion, roll call vote. Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of other items under a town ministry report, if I may.
Go ahead.
Um, so on December 8th, we went online with our permitting for our building department. That is on our website and contractors and residents can now go on our Whitman website and they can scroll down on the left side of the page, the very first front page, the bottom, and click on online permitting. And that will open up a window where they can create an account, fill out the application, they can submit payment and that all goes electronically through to the building department and voila, we have online permitting. It's still a new process, so they're ironing out some of the little glitches and working out some additional details, but it's very positive and I think it's going to be really a great tool for our building department. And just wanted to get that out there, that we are now live online with our permitting. And just to bring up the weather, the accumulations of snow on Thursday keep changing, but unfortunately, they don't keep, they don't change for the less. They seem to change for the more. And I'd like to ask the board if the weather stays consistent with anywhere from 12 to 18 inches that we're expected to get from this with blizzard conditions. I heard on the weather this morning, starting after, just after midnight. I would like to possibly close town hall for Thursday, although have the workers that are available and have the ability to work remotely, be able, to be available to work on Thursday. I just don't want to see our workers on the road during those type of conditions trying to come into the building on Thursday morning.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that. I don't even know, I think we even need a motion for that, do we? Just a safety issue?
I just, I just would like to get the consensus of the board if they're on board.
How's the rest of the board feel?
I think we can just follow typical protocol, which Frank used to do is get an advisement from Bruce and the road crew and, and you know, majority of our employees live in Whitman anyway and you do it in a reasonable amount of time. I don't think we need to start canceling work hours for people two days in advance, to be honest with you.
Right, no, not, not canceling them today, just watching what the weather does and, and tomorrow night and early Thursday morning, monitor the situation and then make the call then.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Sort of, Lisa, can you reach out to Josh and find out like what departments are capable of either VPN-ing in or working from home? I think that's something that we should set up either for COVID or for snowstorms, but at some point, we may have to shift to more remote work.
Right, yes. I will, I will, I will check all that out tomorrow.
Okay. Any other further discussion, right?
It looks like the weather snow from what I see here right through Thursday, so it might be a problem.
Well, we'll see. Alisa, you have anything else for the board? Well, we'll see. Alisa, you have anything else for the board?
Uh, nope, that will do it for right now.
Okay, next on the, uh, the agenda is a budget review and, uh, Chief Breno.
Good evening, everyone. How's, again, how's everybody doing? So. We have the perfect storm brewing. I, I sent an email yesterday, which pretty much out, um, like outlines. Exactly where I stand at the fire department right now with our budget and, and, uh, pending, uh, budget issue that, um, I'm facing. Um, and it's, 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 it's only going to get worse. So I've got a firefighter who went out on injury on October ninth. He, um, was on an ambulance call, um, he was injured on that call, um, he's, he's been out since that time. Um, it appears that his injury may require surgery. Um, so he's, he's probably going to be out at least another three to four months. Um, as you know, over the past couple of years, we've trimmed our budgets and trimmed our budgets to, um. Maintain what, um, we can maintain. Um, one of the line items that, um, that we cut back on is our IOD line. We used to fund that at $50,000. This year, um, it was funded it, um, in my own, like my item is at, uh, $20,000. As of yesterday's payroll, that, um, that line is negative $1,534. Um, I don't have the budget money to continue to cover that person, um, which would result in me running short. Um, we're in the middle of a major pandemic. My guys are seeing COVID cases and suspected demycover cases like every day. The COVID ambulance has done 59 suspected transports already since it's been in service. And that's not counting the second ambulance that does the backup to that truck, truck, I'm like when it's out. You know, we run a six-person shift here and, 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 and we run a six-person shift because of the demand for service. And, 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 and especially now in the middle of this pandemic, I, I, um. I'm looking to, to, to the board's discretion and the board's advice as to how that you wish. Wish me to proceed with the budget issue. Um, I'm looking at probably at least another $40,000 to $50,000 in cost. If he's out three to four months and that's if he comes back in four months, um. It's between $40,000 and $50,000, um, like in that area. Um, and that's money that, that, um, that I just don't have in the budget to, um, cover that person.
Um, we'll be calling. Uh, to open a special town meeting and some warrants. Is this one way we can transfer money, monies into that account? Lisa? Uh, from stabilization or whatever to backfill that situation?
Well, I did, um, I did pass the information along to Ken, um, so that he could look at some different line items of where we. Would be able to, um, pull some money from, um, and I will, uh, have a report on that tomorrow morning. Um, so I did forward it to him. Uh, he mentioned there were a couple of lines, um, that he thought might work. One would be the, um, streetlights. And the other one would possibly be the non-mandating bus and busing where we had some, um, additional money. So there are two lines that, uh, we're going to focus on. Uh, as possible funding.
And that money can be transferred when we call for the special town meeting?
We, what we'll do is, we'll put the warrants in for the special town meeting, yes.
Okay.
So the other side.
Articles.
So, so just so you know, the other side of, uh, the budget issue. Which I outlined is, is the fact that the CARES Act is going away on December 30th. Um, unless they extend it, unless a stimulus package for the cities and towns, uh, might come out, um. For that cross, that like purpose. We don't have any CARES money as of December 30th. Today, because of COVID issues, we've spent. Um, $48,000 with the fire department and overtime cost with COVID, we, uh, with COVID related issues. If on December 31st, I have a shift exposed and I have to quarantine guys for seven days or whatever. As I said earlier, you know, one, one shift is a little over $7,100. Um, two shifts is, is $15,000 and, you know, that's me. I'm not sure about the numbers at the police department, but, um, you know, if I start to lose people. I don't have the money to backfill those shifts. Um, and this fall's COVID issues is magnified 300 from what it was in the springtime. We, Dr. Kroski, you may remember our, like our discussions way back in the spring. When I sent out the workforce projections of firefighters and first responders, uh, um, like being out of work. And it was predicted that like we would lose 40 to 50% of our workforce with the spring COVID. We're seeing those numbers in the fall now. The town of East Bridgewater just had, I, I want to say nine, nine people out. The city of Brockton has 13 to 20 members out, um. And the list goes on, uh, Hanson, Rockland, Bridgewater, everybody is seeing their members exposed. Knock on wood, we've been good here. But my, but my big concern is, is next week is Christmas and then we have New Year's. And who knows what's going to go on after that. And if I lose a shift, you know, we, like, we've got some big problems. Uh, I'm, I'm like facing this and it's not only me, it's the border health also. Um, the, uh, border health, um, asked me to, uh, speak up, uh, on this evening also. Um, they've got one temp, which is being paid for from CARES money. Um, and they barely have their heads above water. If they don't get money after December 30th, for, um, um, like from CARES. Um, the COVID situation in Whitman for the reporting and the contact tracing is going to be, um, extremely difficult. And, 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 and very, very slow process. So whatever other city and town has been looking at in, in, I guess. Waiting for with the COVID revenue issues, we're now seeing it. At least in my department and, and, uh, and, um, like with the border health. So. I'm just looking for some guidance as to how that you want us to, uh, proceed because. The only way that I can proceed forward is to either run short or keep running my budget in. I, I guess, like Lisa was saying, like transfer money in the spring or in January. But we don't know what COVID is going to do to us this, this, this winter. Townwide, actually.
Right. Chief, have you called, have you called up Plymouth County to see exactly what's left? With their, their monies that they received for the towns? I mean, you know, can they extend it?
No.
If, no, even if they've got.
No, uh, December 30th is done, Dan.
Returns to the federal treasury, December 30th.
Yeah.
And Plymouth County has been, um, they, they have been speaking with, um, Senator Markey and Congressman Lynch. So. Uh, you know, they are speaking to, uh, folks to see i- if they can get some type of idea of whether this is going to be extended or not. But unfortunately, I, I don't foresee any, a lot coming out of the federal government until there's a change in the administration. Unfortunately.
So our only alternative is either the run short shift or. Draw our money from someplace. And that's what we're going to have to figure out.
Right.
Yes, Randy.
So, I, I guess just kind of, um. Getting hit with this last minute, um, I, I never got your email, chief. Um, but what I would say, um. We, we do have an option that maybe we could actually, uh, have Ken. Lightle the accountant establish a line or an account and we could allocate funds from. Either free, we allocate a set amount, r- rather than trying to. Pull from various lines and just meeting, uh, what these expected needs may be. I mean, maybe we could, uh, establish our own, um, COVID line. Allocate some funds to it at the special town meeting. And then obviously we, we may not need to spend it all. But you, you then have a, a pot of money or a pool to pull from at that point. Um, and we're not just constantly doing reserve, you know, transfers.
Right.
And line item transfers, but you're, you're almost establishing, uh, an account. Now I think. That we could have some money, um, hearing tonight that the ambulance, th- there could be some money there. Also, uh, believe some other lines may not have been returned to the general fund. Th- that we could pull from. So if we establish something that ma- maybe we put a hundred thousand dollars in, um. May provide that, that leeway to, you know, fund the, uh, public health nurse and, and not only just. I- if a fire shift goes down, but, uh, police shift and.
Right.
Easiest way to do it. And, and also we, we then, uh. I, I would hate to have to make a decision right now. That we're, we're going to decide that our fire department is going to run short shift during a pandemic.
Right.
That, that would be. That's a, uh, town meeting decision.
Right.
That, that they need to decide, I think. So I think that's probably, I think the best way to do it.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, that's what I was getting at. If we can set up a line item and. Put an article in the special town meeting for COVID-19 issue, uh, funding issue. And that way we'll, uh, Ken will have a line to draw from. And then at the end of. When everything is settled in the pandemic, anything left over, I, and any free cash that we want, we can backfill where we took the money out of. We'll say like stabilization. That way we're just backfilling. Yes, Randy, I mean, um, Justin.
Uh, chief, so your, um, your expense line is, you know, where these general, like internal lines are broken up for you. Um, that's going to be set through at least a late January special town meeting? We're not going to run out of funds in the expense line?
No, no, no. Uh, my expenses, uh, were actually pacing fairly well. Um, it's, it's, it's the overtime line.
Payrolls.
Yes, the payroll line that, um, like I'm having these issues with. And I apologize, I, I. Sent an email. I thought it was all. I thought you all got it, but maybe not.
I received it, yeah.
It was in the packet, I think, anyway.
Okay. So it's my payroll line, uh, basically is what my overall, um, my concern is. And, and I think Randy has, has a pretty good idea. Um, or, um, or a thought process on that. Um, if we. Give it to Ken and like, just like Ken is running the, the, uh, CARES program now. Let him be the fiduciary of it and, and, and. If I need money out of it, then I call him and say, can I get three guys out on COVID? If Chief Handland does, then, you know. And, you know, you know, we move it along like that way. And if, if a stimulus package does, does, I might come along, then. I would say that that money would probably just go back into wherever it came from.
Yeah. That sounds like a plan. Do, all right, so, uh, Lisa, if you can put an article, talk to Ken, get an article on, uh, the special town meeting. And we can explain it to the taxpayers exactly why we're doing it.
Absolutely.
Sure, I don't see a problem with that.
Yes.
Chief, do you have anything else for us?
I do not.
Okay, moving on to new business. Announce the plan, announce that there is a vacancy on the planning board. Um, second thing is, uh, consider a request from the town clerk, Don Valley, to increase the hourly rate for election workers. As online, as outlined in the memo, uh, dated November 23rd that she sent us. I guess, Justin, you're more familiar with this issue?
Yeah, um.
Since you were, you suggested it?
Yeah, so I spoke to the, the town clerk, um, a couple of weeks ago now. Our election workers are currently paid below the state minimum wage. Um, throughout this year, I think that our election workers did a phenomenal job. Um, I volunteered at the spring town election, uh, and it was, it was eye-opening to see how much work really goes into running an election in town. So I commend the work that they did through a pandemic, um, distancing masks, all of that. And, uh, I think recognizing that the, the state sets a, a minimum wage, I think we should at least try to meet that, um, within the town. And because election worker salaries are set by the Board of Selectmen, uh, the clerk referred it to us.
Um. Are all, I guess that my question, I don't know, yeah, Lisa, if you can answer this either, are all towns following the, those guidelines?
I don't have the answer to that right off the top of my head, Dan, but I can certainly reach out to other towns and see, uh, what they're doing.
I can at least say that based on a, I think it was 2004 memo from the state attorney general, that towns don't have to.
Okay. Um, and I think she, I'm looking for, I can't, she sent us a rate that she was looking to do?
Yeah, so the rate, the, the.
I see it, yeah.
Checkers and. Um, looks like demonstrators w- would be at the state minimum wage. The clerks would be 50 cents higher and the wardens would be 50 cents above that.
And I'm seeing, I'm looking at it and she's going with a, uh, 2021 increase, 2022 increase and a 2023 increase.
That's to track the current law as the minimum wage progresses. 2023 is when it hits the set target that the state voted three or four years ago.
But that's minimum wage, but not for election workers. That's minimum wage for all workers.
All, all stay out, stay non-tipped wage, minimum wage.
Anybody on the board have any? Any feelings about this?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I, um, just like the discussion we had about the, uh, the Veterans Agent, um. We need to pay these people that are doing some yeoman's work, especially in this pandemic. Um, and just because we can pay them less than the, the minimum wage, doesn't mean we should.
Right.
I know we just had a discussion with the chief about some serious money shortages. When you look at how many elections we have here, um, and what this would break out to be, um. I don't think it's a budget buster. And, um, it's very tough to get people without a pandemic to work these elections. Uh, so you add the pandemic into it, I think, um. This is a wise investment for us. Um, I don't believe it's going to be a budget buster.
Um. Well, I'm looking at three-year raises, like one going from 1225 to $16. The other one's going from 1175 to 1550. And some 1125 to 15. They're pretty good size increases.
However.
Go ahead.
We need to look back at, when did they set those current rates?
Right, I don't know.
Long ago was that set at that particular, uh, dollar value?
I would say five or six years ago. I think the minimum wage was 1125, so probably.
They, we just didn't keep up with it.
Yeah.
Okay. So this is getting to the minimum wage and it wa- within three years?
At the same rate the state is stepping it up.
Yeah, as the state, yeah. Does anybody else have any feelings on it? Would somebody like to make a motion that we do that?
Motion to. Select, uh, move to minimum wage for election workers by 2023 as proposed in our agenda.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. Randy?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next on it, act on the request of Charlene Conway for the reduction in license fees. Lisa?
Okay, so Charlene Conway is the owner of the Carousel Family Fund Center. Um, the governor basically rolled back the reopening, um, back to phase three, step one. Which requires the closures of, um, indoor recreational facilities. So, um, Ms. Conway's business falls into that. Um, she was forced to close back on March 8th, um, and basically was allowed to reopen, um, in October. But with a limited capacity and. Then, uh, as our COVID numbers climbed, the governor rolled back, she's forced to close again. Um, with no income coming in, she's come before the board to ask for a reduction in her licensing fees. Um, which basically she would pay normally $50 a year for the live entertainment. Um, the automatic amusement devices, which are like the, um, pinball machines and video games. She paid normally $50 per, uh, device. She typically has 13. She typically has thirteen, but had reduced it down to seven when she was allowed to reopen in October. Her common vicular license was is twenty five dollars and her Sunday entertainment. License is seventy five dollars. So she's basically asking that we consider lowering her fees. To about two hundred and forty dollars. And what we would do is we would give her a credit that would go towards. Her next licensing fees. And that is what she is asking from the board.
Anybody else, anybody have, now she's looking. To reduce it by two hundred and something or just charge it two hundred and something?
No, well, her normal fees altogether is normally eight hundred dollars. So she is asking for like a prorated licensing fee of two hundred and forty dollars.
So we lose six hundred?
Yeah, of which five hundred and sixty dollars of that would be credited to her account for her future licensing fees. So it's. Allowing her to. Lower her expenses while not forcing them to go out of business due to this most recent closure.
Okay, Chairman.
Yes, yes, Randy.
All right, I think this is a situation where. Probably every business in the town, if not every business in the Commonwealth, has been drastically affected by COVID nineteen. I personally would have liked to have seen this come up on our agenda as a general discussion, what to do with fees. Rather than single out one business. I I think this, if you start with one business and we make a decision, you're going to open up a Pandora's box, which goes into a lot of. Things that we maybe should discuss before we start talking about one singular business in their fees. It's my opinion, and I I just think this is going to go down a very slippery slope of. Revenue that that the town needs. I understand their revenue's down, but now you're. We're talking revenue for the town that in this case may seem like a minimal amount, but what happens? Where do you say no? And where do you allow reductions is something that before we talk about one business, we definitely should iron out prior to. To giving one reduction, there should be some something in place that. Is a broad sweeping policy that is going to apply to every other business if you're going to do it for one.
Yeah, I I I know where you're coming from. I was thinking the same thing. Once you do this. You open it up to all the businesses in town who. Can't be open after nine thirty or couldn't sell alcohol or didn't have the room to have an outdoor patio or whatever. And where, you know, where do you store?
For a considerable amount of time.
Right.
You know, there was a period where probably every business in the town of Whitman has been affected at one point or another. So I I just. I think for the board, our operations that before we make a decision on one sole business. A policy or a direction, a universal broad. Direction needs to be discussed because where does one get a benefit? Why does one qualify for a benefit? Where is another may not qualify for a benefit?
Right. And again, I'm wondering if all the, any of these businesses received any type of federal funding due to this fact?
Right, did they get PPE money?
Right, that's the question.
You know, so it's things, and this may be even be something that. Town council may need to maybe weigh in on.
Yeah. I mean. She's looking for like six hundred dollars off. It doesn't seem like a lot, but that's one business and what, you know, and we got a number of businesses in town. If they're all looking for the same thing, you're turning it to thousands of dollars. And whether or not they receive, right, money from the federal government.
Trust me, my heart breaks for these businesses. It really does. And. You know, I think we've seen the governor and. You know. Politicians from both sides say, you know, these are hard decisions to make, and this is a tough one because I would like to help somebody out, but. Let's know exactly what, you know. How this affects us down the line, the ripple this creates once we throw the stone.
Yep, I agree. Does anybody else have any thoughts on it? All right, we'll go, I'll go Brian first.
I agree with Randy. I was really banging this around in my head a lot today, and and I I came. To a point where I said, if, you know, let's say a pandemic aside. Business such as this kind of a business opened up. And two or three months down the road, they got sick or something happened and they went out of business. Would we? Rebate them? Monies on their licenses because of that? I I don't think we would, but. These are special circumstances, but we have a lot, you know, for a small town, we have a lot of businesses here. And I I'm sure everyone has been affected in some way, shape, or form. And. And I'm very pro business, and I really think that. You know, I feel bad for them. I just don't, I can't see us going down this road. I think it would open up a. Serious problem for us and. You know, this could go into. Twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, it could, you don't know. And and I really think that, well, I really feel bad for. I mean, there are plenty of people out of work that and that plenty of businesses that didn't get people to come back to work. I I just think that this is something that while we've been discussing our problems financially. I I really think it's a bad idea to go down this road.
Okay, Justin?
I I was just gonna say that if we were to consider businesses on a case by case basis, this is the kind of case we'd look at first. Because it's been opened and closed based on the governor's restrictions. Certain parts of the business could operate, certain parts couldn't. Spaced out, only half the machines. So it's it's really been a whirlwind for them. If we do choose to maybe revisit a policy or or something more broad. I'd like to maybe table this till then because this. Would certainly merit consideration.
Either that or she can, or if we decide to do it, she can.
She can reach back out to us.
Table it, she can reissue it, you know, to us on the request. I don't think I'd want to table it because that we'd have to deal with it down the line and need to say yes or no. What we're saying right now is basically is no. At this time, not at this time, because there's facts that we don't know at this time. Like Randy said, you know, she could have gotten federal money, we don't know. But the fact is, other businesses were hurting too, and this is the only request we've had so far. My feeling.
And Dan, you can see to kind of prorate this, there was quite a bit of mathematics that went into it.
Yeah.
Are we, who do we have on staff now that is able to do this on a case by case basis? You know, are we now going to say I might not have been closed, but I was restricted to forty percent capacity? So, okay, you're going to get X amount. I I would like to do it, but it's. Where does it end? Who qualifies? And that's all I'm saying. I don't know how this financially impacts us. I think that needs to be looked into.
Yeah.
But I think just to start with just one case and. Without anything in place, any parameters of who we're going to give it to and why. Is a bad idea.
Right, I agree. Any any further discussion?
Yeah, Dan, I I couldn't agree with more. With all of you, actually. This needs a lot more study. Would like to, I'd like to see what. Some sort of a study of what has happened to the other businesses in town, if they received PPE money, if they didn't. How how many of them are affected in a similar way as as the Carousel Center? What's happening in other towns? I think the 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 right thing to do right now would not be to to say no, but but to table it. I think Justin was right. Table it until we have more information. Table it until we know what we might be able to do for any of the businesses in town. That, as Randy has pointed out, might have the same situation. So.
So you're thinking that?
I'd second, I'd second Justin's motion to table.
I'll formally make a motion to table, so Carl can second.
All right, then, for discussion, I'd like to say, so then we're going to ask all businesses in town that if this pandemic. If it limited your ability to to make what you normally made as far as funds. If we could give them a reduction on their fees, town fees. So we're looking for all businesses in town to come forth.
No.
I think we're looking, I think we're looking to do some research on our own.
This business.
How they were affected.
One at a time.
I I personally just, I would like to see what other towns are doing. If there's going to be some parameters. I mean, obviously, we we know all businesses were affected, so I don't like saying, hey, tell us if you lost money. And and that's to be. Somewhat cavalier, but I think we know that they all have hurt this year. So what are other towns doing? How are they? You know, if they are doing some reimbursements, you know, what are those parameters and? And I think reach out to Michelle and see if, well, if we do this for one. You know, if we set up our own guidelines of how we're going to do it. Would that be legal? So and then maybe report back on that.
Okay. Lisa, do you want to say something?
No, I would just say I I can certainly, I'll reach out to the other towns and see if they've received similar requests and how they've handled it. I will reach out to Michelle tomorrow and put that with that question so we can get some answers and see what we come up with.
So hearing that, Justin, could you redo, restate your. Motion that we, the motion to table, but also to see how other towns are handling this situation or if they even had requests?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'll make a motion to table this request until we have a little bit more information. Put it that way.
How's that sound? Better?
Okay. Of his of his motion, I think that's fine.
Okay, Randy?
Was very open and ended, in my opinion, but.
Yeah.
I'll vote yes.
Okay. Kyle?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll say yes. So it looks like you've got some research to do, Lisa.
Get on that.
You can play Mrs. Claus to the businesses. Discuss the use of town hall for boards and committee meetings. I think. The the DPW used it to interview for a new employee. Basically, that was it, I believe. I don't think they have any more meetings here, right?
They did have one other additional meeting, but after that, they've. Decided to go back to the Zoom format.
Okay.
The other board that had two meetings were the Board of Assessors. The Board of Assessors, they. I I don't know the exact reason, but they refused to meet via Zoom. So during the warmer months, they were actually meeting outside of town hall in the area between our handicap door and the post office. So they were sitting out there and meeting. And then they, when the weather started to get much colder. We we talked with the health inspector, the fire chief, and we brought it before the board that we were looking at this as a. Case by case request when the COVID numbers were looking good. They had booked a meeting in the lower town hall. We basically, any any of the public that came into the building, and I don't believe there were any. Were basically routed to come into the, through the handicap door, right into the lower town hall, and they go right back out to their their. Travels within town hall were limited. And then they, it was successful for the first meeting. They did request a second meeting, which they had, and. I did inform our assessor Kathy Keith that during the last meeting that. The board is having second thoughts on allowing meetings to occur within the town hall. And they have agreed that there will be no more meetings within the town hall.
All right, so that ends the issue. So how does the board feel about having any meetings at all in the town hall at this time?
Dan, I think it's kind of a no brainer. If you look at the number of COVID cases per day in in Massachusetts now. And where it's going, the fact that we're, it was announced earlier today that we are still, we are in the red, still in the red. In Whitman, I think it's a no brainer that we don't have in person meetings in town hall.
Okay, I agree. I agree. Do we need a motion on this? Or we just, Lisa, just not allow town meeting, you know, meetings in town hall?
Any further requests will be denied.
Okay, I don't think we need a motion, a meeting, you know, on this here. Okay, old business, vote to ratify the contract of employment for the interim town administrator. The her contract's been signed, we just need to vote it. So do I hear a mo, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll move it.
There's a second.
Second, Brian.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Randy?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay. Special town meeting dates. What are we looking at, Lisa?
So during our last meeting, we talked about a few dates. I believe it was Selectman Lamatina and Selectman Kowalski who. Were looking to push the special town meeting out possibly towards the end of of January. Looking at the date of January twenty seventh, which was also the date that Michelle had available. And just wanted to check and see if that's still the consensus of the board. I did have a. I'm sorry.
January twenty seventh?
Twenty seventh, it's a Wednesday.
Yeah.
I did have a conversation with Bob Rogers from the school. And he basically explained to me, as far as the Performing Arts Center to hold a town special town meeting. That center can actually hold up to a hundred and fifty people. As he said, there's about fourteen rows of sections in that, and. If you have two people from the same family who come together, they sit together. So instead of just having one person every six, you've got your your same family that are sitting together, and then you have them separated. So he said the. Center can hold anywhere from one forty to one fifty. And he thinks that it would be accommodating. It's. Climate controlled, so it won't be cold. And, you know, anything that we need, he is just waiting to hear our decision of. A date so he can get things rolling on getting that ready for us.
I guess my only question is, why Wednesday?
Those are the, seem to be the dates that Michelle were were available in January. She has negotiations and bargaining sessions.
So she's only available on that Wednesday?
Hold on, there were a couple of other dates, January sixth. She was available on the thirteenth, but then she withdrew that date.
So Wednesday, yeah?
Yeah. She may have the twentieth available. But Wednesday seemed to be the the best day unless there's some other dates we want to look at.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think the latest, the latest that we can do it in January, the best it is, if she's. Twenty seventh.
All right, so twenty seventh?
I would go along with that.
You don't need a motion on that fact, do you? Or do you?
We don't need a motion on that. I do need a motion.
We will open town meeting.
For the board to call for the special town meeting. And then we will need the motion to open the special town, special town meeting warrant.
Okay, so, all right, I'll need a motion to call for a special town meeting on January twenty seventh, twenty twenty one. Your motion?
I'll move.
You're a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just, do we need to put the time? Is it going to be seven or seven thirty? Lisa, is that?
Haven't thought of the time yet exactly. What what is the?
Well, normal time is seven o'clock, right?
Yeah, probably a seven o'clock would probably work better.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, any any further discussion? Okay, any, any further discussion? Seeing none, Randy?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay, I need a motion to open the town meeting warrant, the special town meeting warrant.
I'll move.
So, all right, okay, any further discussion?
Is there a, a closed date for that?
So I, I, oh, given now, based on the snowstorm, I would ask that we close the warrant on Tuesday, the twenty second of December.
Tuesday, twenty second? Okay. So that's it, that is in the, that is in the motion to open the town meeting warrant and to, starting what, tonight, right? And to close it on the twenty second?
Yes.
Would that be close of business?
Close of business on the twenty second, yes, so that would give them until seven thirty that evening.
So that's basically a week?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, any discussion on it? Seeing none, Randy?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Anything else need to be? Let's see. Okay, that. Looking to see. On my agenda. I guess that. I guess that finishes our open, our open session. So I need, I'll need a motion at this time to go into executive session. To vote to adjourn and enter executive session pursuant to national law thirty A twenty one. A section three to discuss strategy with respect to litigations, Bush versus the town of Whitman, civil service appeal docket. Number E twenty dash one thirty four and litigations between the town of Whitman and Edward Slocum. If any other, any open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation. Or position of the public bodies, the chair so declares, and when we are done in the executive session, we'll be. Not returning it to open session, we'll be adjourning out of the executive session. So do I hear a motion?
I'll move.
You're at second?
Second.
Okay, Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, see everybody in exec.